Well, hello and welcome everybody to this Tuesday evening, December 2nd, City Council meeting. I'm glad you're all here. We'll open this meeting with the land acknowledgement. The land that Eureka rests on is known in the Wiat language as Jerujiji. Passed actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Eureka acknowledged the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement demonstrates the city's commitment to dismantle the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism. And before we open this meeting, we will need to invite Councilmember Fernandez, who'd like to be coming in on Zoom. Can you state your reason for being gone, please?
Yeah, family. Taking care of family.
Okay, so if we could get a motion in a second to...
I move that we allow Councilmember Fernandez to participate in this meeting remotely.
A second. Great, we have a motion in a second, please vote.
Three yes votes, Councilmember Contreras Deloche absent, motion carries.
Great, welcome, Councilmember Fernandez. And with that, we'll have a roll call.
Councilmember Castellano?
Here.
Councilmember Moulton?
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Present.
Councilmember Bauer?
Here.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche is absent, Mayor Burgel?
Here.
And with that, we will, well, who care to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and just a few mayor's announcements, just to let you know, it's kind of some things that are happening in the city. So Saturday, this coming Saturday, is the Salty Santa Parade, and you can head on down to the boardwalk at 11:00 a.m. to hang out and watch all the boats go by, it's a lot of fun. December 13th, the Truckers Parade is going to be happening. It's a long-term tradition here in Humboldt. And then December 3rd, Dick Taylor's Chocolate is having their tree lighting down in Old Town. And that's always a great time, it's beautiful, Old Town is beautiful. And then the last thing is that HCOG is hosting a community workshop for safer and more connected communities, and that's happening tomorrow night, 5:30 at the Warfinger, if you're interested. So those are my, what's, what's happening in Eureka. That's not everything, but it's just a few highlights. We have no presentations or reports, and so this moves us to the public comment period. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. City Council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. And are there friends here who'd like to speak in public comment? Come on up. And you can just line, line up on the side, on the wall over here? Great, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I have this, my comment is addressed to both the Humboldt County Supervisors and the Eureka City Council, and I didn't realize until I already had this... Until I already had this typed, that the council, the Board of Supervisors wasn't meeting until, wasn't meeting this week. So, it's regarding repainting of streets. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Phyllis Coy. I am here today to ask, if not beg, you to please repaint the Harrison Avenue center line. Since this is the dividing line for the city and county, I'm not sure whose responsibility the job is. It is hard to see in the daylight and almost impossible to see at night. With the rainy season soon to be upon us, it will be that much more difficult to see the center line. It seems that some drivers who cannot see a center line choose to take their half of the street out of the center of the street, and that makes for some very interesting swerving to avoid head-on or side-swiping. No doubt, there are many other public streets in your jurisdictions that could also use a healthy dose of repainting. Please consider this a very valuable gift for everyone, for all, for everyone who drives. Thank you for your time tonight, this evening, respectfully, Phyllis Coy, and I have copies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on up. Hi there.
Hello, my name is Dakota, I'm a member of DSA, and I just wanted to ask the City Council to pass a resolution regarding the hopefully not coming war with Venezuela. I think that it would be a good way to make do on that land acknowledgement and to, you know, have Eureka be on the right side of history. So, that's something that me and a couple other people are going to be talking about, and thank you in advance, hopefully.
Thanks Dakota. Come on up. Welcome.
Thank you, my name is David Haney, I am speaking on behalf as a member of the Humboldt Anti-War Committee and as a former Secretary of the Humboldt County Human Rights Commission. This is in regards to the resolution that we are trying to get the city of Eureka to put on the agenda concerning Venezuela. This colonial looting is happening in broad daylight. The United States is never bringing freedom, it is always marching like the invading army of resource-hungry vultures that it is, treating an entire sovereign nation as a buffet for its corporations. I'm going to talk about doctrines, and this is an age-old doctrine, steal their oil, crush their economy, and pretend it's humanitarian. It is shameless, imperial entitlement is what it is. It is a modern-day extension of the Roosevelt Corollary, look that up. Corporate invasion at the request of ExxonMobil, and millions of lives are on the line. This is not just a reflection of the Monroe Doctrine, this is the United States following the neoconservative Wolfowitz Doctrine and the Bush Doctrine, preemptively changing a regime and taking control of another nation's resources in the name of fighting terrorism. In this instance, that rhetoric has morphed into fighting narco-terrorism. Because that's what neoliberalist countries have propagandized us to believe, that brown people from West Asia are all terrorists, and that brown people from Central and South America are all narco-terrorists. In reality, Western neoliberal countries have propagated the most brutal regimes in human history. Why are we here at the Eureka City Council today talking about this? To take a stand, to have Humboldt live up to its reputation amongst some as a progressive bastion, to emulate what the Arcata City Council did when Bush invaded Iraq and the City Council voted on a resolution to impeach him, to set a baseline standard for the values that people all over the United States should be fighting for and striving for, for the people to come together, take the power back from these corporations that control so much of our existence and reality, and to get our local governments to divest and sanction these corrupt corporations to disrupt this culture of fascism and greed from the ground up. Like one of my mentors, Mutulu Olubala, also known as M1 from Dead Prez, has said, "We address international issues because we are looking at a part and parcel of the same struggle." As the late, rest in peace, Mother Assata Shakur said, "The boot on the neck of the Vietnamese is the same boot on my neck." And as the renowned political prisoner known to us as Mumia Abu Jamal said, "We need to globalize resistance." So we are doing what is right by coming today in solidarity and resistance. Seventy percent of the American people oppose military action in Venezuela, and we are asking that the city of Eureka act in solidarity with our community and with the people of the United States and pass this resolution to affirm the sovereignty of the nation of Venezuela. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Come on up. Good evening.
Good evening, I'm here on behalf of Humboldt Anti-War Committee, and I'm requesting the City Council add the resolution against war with Venezuela to the next meeting. As a citizen of the world and a taxpayer in the U.S., it is my duty to stand in fierce opposition to the U.S. imperialism and military aggression of all kinds, but especially for resource extraction, blatant racism, and a disregard for human life, sovereignty, and autonomy. The disrespect towards the working and the poor to use the endless funds on creating enemies out of the other working and poor people abroad, while there are near infinite uses for those funds to better the lives of everyday people here, is unforgivable. The U.S.'s foreign policy has never improved the lives of anyone besides weapons contractors, hedge funds, and desperate politicians who refuse to meet the needs of their people and seek relevance through scapegoating millions of dead innocent people. From Korea, Vietnam, Laos, Cambodia, Guatemala, Chile, Nicaragua, Iraq, Iran, Afghanistan, Palestine, the list goes on, at what point is enough? I realize that we are thousands of miles away, and this gesture is mostly symbolic, but I believe that no distance is too far to stand for the right thing, and I hope that you have the courage in joining us to do that tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Come on up. Very tall.
Thank you. So I imagine you can probably guess what I'm going to be advocating. Hello, city of Arcata, my name is Ryan Littleton, and I'm here to advocate for the resolution that condemns the attacks on civilian boats in the Caribbean and U.S. aggression as well towards Venezuela. I think as a community, we want to be known for pushing human rights, and these attacks have been condemned by the U.N. and Amnesia. And there has been no evidence of any drug smuggling at all from Venezuela. I hope this resolution will condemn the attacks as well as U.S. interference and also the sanctions. I think it is important for Eureka to stand and to push against this imperialism that has been brought on Venezuela. It doesn't really matter what our opinion on the Maduro government is, is up to the people of Venezuela to decide without any U.S. interference, U.S. interference or force sanctions upon them. Thank you very much, and I hope you put the resolution for the next agenda.
Thanks for being here.
Hello, my name is Malin, and I'm also part of the Humboldt Anti-War Committee. And I'm here also asking the council members to add the Venezuela anti-war resolution to the agenda for the next council meeting. It will reflect, reflects the opinion of the American people who are against another forever war. And as a student who has, a part of a group who has historically fought against wars and invasions, I'm asking you guys to reflect the opinions of students and the American people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Howdy, Mayor, City Council. I've been here before, I'm a third-generation American and veteran and Eurican. And it's the fourth and fifth generation here now, and the fifth one is driving. First of all, I want to thank you for glamorizing my park that I grew up, 2030 Park, it's magnificent. You did a good job. And I want to thank the chief, we're having a school resource officer at some of the schools, I think Eureka High and Zane. My sister works her part-time, so she's happy for that. But I was looking at some papers I had from 2021, Mayor Seaman had had a traffic safety committee, and I know they did some lower speed issues, you know, on F towards the golf course and different crosswalks and morning lights and, but we still need some enforcement somehow. People are speeding and doing crazy, well, you know, crazy things, running lights, like coming down Merlin West, they just kind of turn right down west and don't stop, sometimes in the morning going to work. But with my, my grandson and my great niece driving now, in my older age, it's getting tougher out there. I was out at Appria Healthcare getting some older age stuff today, and lady was telling me fifty percent of the drivers pass Ocean View and Appria out there on South Broadway, they don't obey the forty mile an hour, they just go. So I don't know, you know, Harrison, Harrison. We probably, we need a, between the city and county, we need some traffic turn signals when you're coming up Harrison and coming from Shakers, because there isn't any. So people that come up to turn to go east towards Safeway, and they're just waiting and waiting, waiting, and then they're, they're in the red, and then they turn left. But there's all, well, you know, you see it every day. But we, I don't know how we can fund it, but we really need some more enforcement. We have our activities, and we got our new bike, thanked Arcata, and our bike lanes on C Street, but it's dangerous for the pedestrians out there, too. Thank you for your time, and have a good Christmas.
Thank you, thanks for being here. Hi there.
Hello, my name is Rick Toledo, I'm also with the Humboldt Anti-War Committee. The first thing I wanted to do was just read some polling results from Marquette. They asked the question, "Do you think the United States should attempt to remove Venezuelan leader Nicolas Maduro from power?" And the Republicans had sixty-two percent no, thirty-eight percent yes. Independents had seventy-nine percent no, twenty percent yes. Democrats said eighty-eight percent no, twelve percent yes. So, the overall consensus is that people do not want another war, we don't want another forever war. It's very clear that this is because they've nationalized their oil, and they're using those funds to benefit regular people's lives, and the U.S. would love to get their hands on that oil. And I think it's, and especially the Trump administration who are escalating this. I think it's really important that even though this is happening very far away, that we do take some kind of stand against it, because it is our tax dollars that are being used, even here locally in Eureka, all over the country, right? So, by putting out a resolution just to say that we do not agree with more forever wars, we do not agree with blood for oil and our tax dollars going to fund it, I think it's a really important message of solidarity. And I think it's just an easy action that the city of Eureka could take to kind of, you know, show that we're against war, that we don't want our money to go towards that, that we don't want to kill people just like us overseas. So I would ask that you please consider it. We really want this on the agenda for next meeting if possible, or as soon as you can put it on the agenda, just so that we can have this resolution. It would mean a lot, I think, to, as I said, I just told you the polling numbers, it would mean a lot to most Americans, whether they be Republican, Democrat, or Independent. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in chambers who came to comment on items not on the agenda? Seeing no one, do you see anybody on Zoom?
Phone number ending in eight, four, one. You can unmute?
Good evening.
Hello.
Can you, can you hear me?
I can, we can.
I was dismayed at today's showing of arrogance, for lack of a better word, that a walkability audit was held with very short notice during work orders, work hours, and at a time that parents would need to pick up children from school. Having excluded the vast majority of citizens in the city, this event should not have been held at that time. This event was held by HCOG. It's a combined effort of multiple governments, and it seems that each city and the county have given them free rein over instituting whatever traffic changes they wish and have abandoned their control over what happens on their roadways. I found this section of their website interesting, equity and inclusive access. Transportation equity seeks fairness in transportation programs and that no group is disproportionately impacted. HCOG is committed to holding equity and accessibility efforts at the core of our programs and strategies. Almost every single property owner along the C Street bicycle project would vehemently disagree with you. I know several people who live along there, a few of them property owners. One has elderly parents living there. Their response for medical time has been increased by the need to go around the block three sides to get to the residence in the middle of the street that had the unfortunate luck to be in the wrong direction for emergency medical services. That added time for response could be the difference between a favorable and unfavorable response outcome. Have you decreased the resale value of those houses, leading to financial loss for the current owners? Only time will tell. And this council has handily rid themselves of any responsibility for any of that impact by giving it to a transportation czar that holds no responsibility to the citizens of Eureka. Their inclusivity for transportation programs does not include people who drive, who wish to park on their own street, and who are subject to governance without representation. How could I not be upset? The citizens of Eureka are not adequately represented here. The mayor of a city of twenty-five thousand has the same vote as the representatives from Blue Lake. Eight people are making the transportation decisions, seven of them are not City of Eureka representatives. No one should be making these decisions save those who are residents of the city and those who are its representatives and employees. Because it is we, the residents, who are most impacted by these decisions. To abdicate that responsibility and authority and wash your hands of unpopular and unrepresented outcomes is cowardly. The citizens of Eureka deserve full representation in what happens in our city.
Thank you. Thank you.
Andrew?
Hi, everybody, I'm Andrew, I'm a teacher in Eureka.
Hi, Andrew.
I just, hi, I just want to come in support of the Humboldt Anti-War Committee and their, and you guys putting a anti-war with Venezuela resolution on the agenda. I think it's super important for us to, as a community, to stand up against this. I think it's important that being on the agenda and allowable for public comment for, for the public to be able to engage with this at all, because we really don't get to. And, you know, I think this is really like the closest, you know, shit gets shoveled downhill, and, you know, like, Kim, you know, like, working in schools, it's, you know, this is where it lands, like, we need more funding for schools, like, back in May, I went to the Fight for Schools rally in Sacramento, and I had a sign, and it's kind of silly, but it's really, you know, it, it's really true. It says, "Funding for books, not money for crooks." I have it on the wall in my classroom, and it's just like, that's what, I don't know, it's, it's what we're seeing, we're seeing a a greedy oil war again, and, you know, like, kids are struggling, classrooms are understaffed. Teachers and aides are not paid nearly enough. And our money's going to, like, two bombs being dropped on boats in Venezuela, probably on the mainland soon, and just, I think this is like our opportunity to kind of shovel it back in any way we can, and it's an easy thing to do, it's a popular thing to do. It's a no-brainer, I think it would mean a lot. And I didn't know this, but when, when one of the earlier speakers, David, said that Arcata had adopted an anti-war resolution and that, when the Iraq war started, you know, that's like, this isn't, this isn't anything crazy, this has been done before, and I think it's, I think it does send a powerful message. You know, going on back up the, the chain of command to people who are making these decisions. So, thank you for your, your time.
Amy?
You. Hi, everybody. I, I'm here for a few reasons. The first is, today is Giving Tuesday. So, if you can, it's just a time to remember that there are so many nonprofits out there that are really carrying a lot of weight for our community. There's a lot of people in need these days, and that number's only growing, so pitching in where we can. I was able to go to the Northern California Association of Nonprofits panel that they had a few weeks ago, and Leslie did a beautiful job in wrapping up after the panel and said, you know, things are hard everywhere, like, maybe we can start recognizing places where we can, you know, sacrifice some of our comfort so that others don't have to be completely without. So, maybe, she said it much more eloquently than I can. It was a really wonderful event, representing so many of the people who do really hard things every day to support everyone in our community. So, if you can, find a local nonprofit, join in on Giving Tuesday. The, another thing is supporting our youth. Humboldt County Transition Age Youth Collaboration, tomorrow, Wednesday, December 3rd, from 2:30 to 4:30, is hosting a visioning, a community partner visioning. So, this isn't just for youth, this is for adults, community partners, service providers who work with youth, people who are invested in the health and well-being of youth in Humboldt. If you have time and can fit this into your schedule, it would be amazing to support the Youth Advocacy Board, to support all the work that the youth really put into trying to better this community and to develop their voices as change agents. Echoing what Andrew just said, a bumper sticker I had growing up is, "Why is there always money for war but never schools?" I agree with all of the work that the Anti-War Committee is putting into adopting a resolution in the city to just state that we're not here for war. There's so many people who are in need and so much work that we can be doing here. The idea of murdering people instead just does not seem like it should be a priority. So, any way we can to support one another and to build each other up and to build the world we want to live in. I just hope that we can all figure out ways to do that in our lives. So, thank you guys very much, hope you have a great evening.
Thanks, Amy.
I see no one else on Zoom.
Okay, seeing no one else on Zoom, we will close the public comment and bring it back for council reports. Shall we start with you, Councilmember Fernandez?
If that simplifies it, sure.
Thank you.
So, about two weeks ago, attended a ride-along with Humboldt Bay Fire. Less of a ride-along, I think I went on one call, the rest of the time was spent in the classroom. Super nerdy, I know, but it was interesting to see the type of things that the firefighters themselves have to stay up on in terms of their own education. Learning that, I believe, and please, anybody correct me if I get this wrong, EMTs have to do about twenty hours of continuing education and then, or twenty-four hours, and I believe it's the paramedics that have to do forty-eight hours of continuing education. So it's just fascinating to hear what they have to cover and what they do each of those days. No, I didn't get to go down the fire pole like Councilmember Contreras Deloche some weeks back, but I'll put that on my bucket list moving forward. Also, in the same day, attended the Henderson Center Open House, it was, it was just great, it was lively. Some of the live music there, the carolers, and seeing the businesses with the opportunity to stay open a little later. Then, just earlier this week, yesterday in fact, attended the Committee on Emergency Shelter and Guidelines that myself and Councilmember Contreras Deloche participate in. It sounds as if staff is making inroads with another potential site for tiny homes and have an upcoming staff trip planned to Portland, I believe, this week. Please correct me on that, city manager, where they're going to be viewing the manufacturing and fabrication of tiny homes that we may be using here in the future. And did, did put in their ear and may have the opportunity to stop at the Dignity Village in Portland, which is a recognized city encampment, and see how that's managed. And then it also sounded like there may be a few leftover Bosch cubes that are looking for ironically some homes, too. So if anybody has some property or some ideas about where those can be utilized, please let us know, and that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Castellano?
Okay. Let's see, over the last couple of weeks, I have been holding some, just generally speaking, I've been participating in a lot of discussions and community conversations around place-making, placekeeping, and beautification efforts. And just want to let the public know that this is, if you ever want to talk to me about these things, it's something I, I care a lot about, and there will be some public meetings related to this coming forward in like spring, 2026. Let's see, I attended the, this isn't directly related to City Council, it is kind of related to the community. I'm on the Workforce Development Board, so I attended that meeting where there's a really, some really great presentations and updates on the wind industry and the terminal here. I attended the Eureka Main Street, well, I co-chair the Economic Vitality Committee for Eureka Main Street, and we kind of talked about, that's where some of the place-making, placekeeping conversations are happening. And, you know, we just kind of talked about different ways to support economic vitality for local businesses. And I will be traveling tomorrow evening and Thursday to Southern California to... And I will be traveling, uh, tomorrow evening and Thursday to, to Southern California to, uh, uh, attend the Cal Cities League Leaders Meeting, um, as the, I'm the Chair of the Housing Community Economic Development Policy Committee for Cal Cities this upcoming year.
Thank you. Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, let's see, with the holiday in between this and the last meeting, uh, most of my other meetings didn't happen. But I did get a chance to speak to the, uh, Eureka Women's Club about waste reduction and some of the compost regulations that are coming down. Uh, had a lovely Thanksgiving. Hope everybody else had at least a day of rest. Um, looking forward this weekend to Arts Alive. Uh, it might be rainy, but Humboldt isn't afraid of that. Grab your umbrella and go out and shop local. Um, you get higher quality products and better customer service and all those dollars stay in our local community. Local businesses are far more likely to donate to local nonprofits and employ local people. Um, I'm also looking forward to, on Monday, December the 8th, uh, we'll be having a town hall here in the council chambers at 5:30. Uh, it's called Designing Density with Neighborhoods in Mind. Did I get that right? Yeah, yeah, clever title. Um, it's basically about how the city of Eureka is working to, um, balance the housing needs and, uh, developers wanting to build stuff and maintaining the character and the quality of life that we have built here. So, if you're interested in that, if you want to give some input on that, um, please join us either in person or on Zoom. That's Monday, this coming Monday, um, the 8th at 5:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I attended a Keep Eureka Beautiful meeting. Um, those are the people that bring you street trees. A lot of great volunteers there trying to beautify our city. I also went to the Henderson Center Open House. Um, wanted a shout-out to Humboldt Bay Fire. You guys were, uh, a big draw for the kids. Loved it, of course, getting on the fire truck. Um, and it was great seeing all the businesses open and, and a lot of people down there enjoying that, that night. Um, had a meeting, uh, Redwood Coast Energy Authority. There's a lot going on in the energy, energy space. A lot of negative things, but I'll say that, um, RCEA is working on getting more battery storage, you know, more local energy. And I, I will say this too, that, um, we did a survey. And I want to say it was fifty percent of people thought we were an arm of PG&E. Redwood Coast Energy Authority. We are not. We are independent of PG&E. We're our own power company, essentially. Uh, we buy power from them. So, just want to get that out there. People understand we're different. And, um, you know, our focus is on giving renewable energy for our community. Um, that's really our mission. Um, and I'll also be traveling to, what, Thursday and Friday, uh, with Councilmember Castellano to, uh, Cal Cities League Leaders Meeting and a, a Board of Directors Meeting. So, looking forward to that. Thanks.
Okay, and then I have a couple of things. So, um, I attended the HCOG meeting, uh, where we talked about Rena numbers and things such things. I also attended the Humboldt Literacy, um, Honoring Learners and Tutors Event. And what a beautiful event that was to see these people that are learning to read as adults, um, and their teachers and just, um, the courage, uh, that it takes to, to, to do that. And then I just, um, tonight, I just really want to, um, appreciate public comment. And when I was listening, you know, I wanted to appreciate the guy that was on the Humans Rights, Rights Commission. What an important work happens there. Um, but when I was listening to public comment this evening, I was reminded that we, we have an ordinance on the books, uh, Human Rights Ordinance. And so I looked it up. And I appreciate it very much. And, um, I'm going to read it to you. Um, because this is where our city comes from, just so you're aware, because I think sometimes, you know, we, we lose sight of this. So, I'm going to take a moment. And this was the Resolution Number 2017-05, Resolution of the City Council Affirming Human Rights, Inclusiveness, Environmental Sustainability, Affordable Healthcare, and Religious Freedom. Whereas in light of the current climate in our country and the negativity and hate that is being fostered, and whereas Eureka will not turn our back on people from other countries who bring such richness to our city, we will continue to build bridges, not walls. And whereas we will never back down on human rights, whether in healthcare, the workplace, or any other area threatened by others who treat people as objects to be demeaned or objects to be assaulted. And just as important, we will ensure our youth grow up with role models who show them they can be or do anything. And whereas that there will be no conversion therapy, no withdrawal of rights in Eureka. And to all the LGBTQIA people in our city and all over the country who feel scared, bullied, or alone, you matter. You're seen. You are loved. Whereas that we still believe in this nation's founding principles of religious freedom, we do not, do not ban people for their faith. And the only lists we keep are on invitations to come pray together. And whereas the Eureka Police Department is committed to building trust beyond police and communities of color, so all citizens feel safe in their neighborhoods. And whereas our residents are committed to environmental sustainability and that climate change is real and that clean power, zero waste, and other measures to protect future generations are a priority. And whereas affordable, universal healthcare should be continuing priority for the state of California and the United States. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Eureka, condemns all hate crimes and hate speech. We will fight discrimination and recklessness in all its forms. We place the highest value on human rights. Further resolve that this resolution be forwarded to Senators Feinstein, Harris, and Representative Huffman to demonstrate our city's commitment to fairness and inclusion. And the reason I wanted to read that out loud is, number one, because that's what we stand for here in our city. We voted that in and that was a process that really took a long time. Not a long time, but there was quite a debate to make that happen. And secondly, I was hopeful, I was hopeful that there was some, some language in there that would be responsive to the, the, the things that I heard tonight, so that we could expedite sending a, a resolution tomorrow. Um, and, you know, if this resolution, I know it doesn't talk about Venezuela and it doesn't talk about the crimes, but if this resolution was something that we could send, um, I would love to see us send it tomorrow to all of the government agencies that need to, need to have it. Because, you know, frankly, all this divisiveness and hate is really boring and it's painful and it's hurtful and we really, it doesn't help any of us. It really doesn't help any of us. So, that is, would be my thing is if, I, I would love it if council or if, you know, we thought that this language was good enough or appropriate enough to send tomorrow. And if it is, let's send it tomorrow and maybe we can figure out how to do that, Bob. Uh, excuse me, City Attorney Black. Um, and if it's not something that council is interested, or if the language isn't appropriate, then, then not. But, um, this is really important. And I really appreciate every single one of you that came out tonight, every single one of you. So, with that, I don't know if, can I ask a question or is that, is it an appropriate time to do that, Bob? Can we talk?
Yeah, I can address, I can address the process.
Okay.
So, this is a resolution that is already a piece of legislation that the city has adopted at some time passed through the action of its city council. Uh, that is existing legislation. It, it doesn't expire. It still expresses the position of the city and hasn't been modified. Uh, to the extent that it addresses the concerns, uh, you are, uh, taking an action indirect, if you wish, to direct staff to communicate this resolution to, uh, the appropriate uh, individuals and entities in Washington such as the President, the Secretary of Defense, uh, our senators, and perhaps, uh, some key, uh, committee members in the House and the Senate. Uh, I think you could just direct your staff to do that. And that could all happen tomorrow, uh, as opposed to having to wait, uh, and let time pass. And in that time that is passing or potentially passing, uh, some pretty bad things could happen.
I'm a fan of moving it forward. I think, you know, two weeks could be critical. I mean, we don't know, right? Two weeks could be critical. I don't know, is this something that council would have a discussion or do you take consensus? Or does the public comment? Or how, can you give me an idea about process?
I'll, I'll just add, you're free to direct staff by consensus.
Okay.
As long as it's not, uh, a legislative act, which this would not be.
Okay. So, I have one thumbs up. Is there anything? Two thumbs up. Councilmember Moulton, did you have a question or concern?
Uh, no, I just wanted to make a suggestion that we write a letter around it to contextualize why we're sending this specifically now. And we could call that Legislative Action Correspondence. Just so that it has context. Okay.
Councilmember Fernandez, I can't see a thumb.
Well, that's because I have a hand.
Oh, is that hand a question or is that hand a thumb?
Question.
Okay.
Uh, and so, uh, while I, while I would give a thumbs up to, to sending this, this doesn't prohibit us from, uh, attempting to move forward with the resolution though, correct?
Uh, no, nothing would prohibit you from moving forward, uh, except the Brown Act would require that it be agendized. The, um, suggestion of Councilmember Moulton, uh, to send a contextualizing letter, uh, again, is, uh, within your power to direct by consensus.
Okay. Yeah, I was just asking for, uh, guidance in that scenario. And then, of course, there is future agenda items and I can wait for that. But you have a thumbs up for me.
So, we've got thumbs up. And I have one for Renee, who's not here. She's not here. This is not really Renee's thumb. This is my thumb. I have two thumbs. Can't do that. I have two thumbs. Okay. It really wasn't Renee's thumb. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fernandez.
Okay. This moves us to our consent calendar. Listening, uh, let's see, public, uh, not public hearings. Notice to the public, all matters listed under this category are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. Pursuant to City Council Resolution 2011-22, if a member of the public would like an item on the consent calendar pulled and discussed separately, the request shall be made to a council member prior to the meeting. Unless a specific request is made by a council member, the consent calendar will not be read. There will be no separate discussion of these items. And no one has mentioned anything to me. Does anyone need anything pulled? Seeing none, can we get a motion to?
Move we approve. The consent calendar is written.
Second.
Please vote.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Aye.
Four yes votes. Councilmember Contreras Deloche absent. Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, this moves us to Legislative Action Correspondence. Uh, Councilmember Bauer?
Thank you. Um, there's a Senate bill, Senate Bill 684, called the Polluters Pay Climate Superfund Act 2025. And it's kind of unusual because, um, you know, the legislative session starts, I think, January 5th or something. Bills typically don't go, um, they're trying to get them out of committee and, and keep them advancing. And this bill, and I'll just read a, a brief, uh, piece of it. The bill would enact the Polluters Pay Climate Superfund Act of 2025 and would establish the polluters, polluters Pay Climate Superfund Program to be administered by the California EPA to require, require fossil fuel polluters to pay their fair share of the damage caused by greenhouse gases released into the atmosphere during the years 1990 to 2024. So, yeah, it's kind of a, um, you know, the chances of it successfully moving forward are probably pretty tough. But, um, it needs to get out of committee in January. It's got a, um, challenging road ahead of it. But, um, I talked to, um, uh, Representative from Senator McGuire's office and said, yeah, if you guys could support this bill, this would be the time. So, I'd like to get consensus. You know, I think this is something that would be no beneficial to the planet, but also, um, for our community. So, um, a letter of support for Sen, uh, Senate Bill 684 is what I'm asking for.
One, two, three. Councilmember Fernandez?
I'm, I'm just mulling that over because it's one of the, one of the litany I'm not familiar with. Um, would it be, would you be amenable, uh, Councilmember Bauer, to have this come back for our, uh, would that be the December 16th meeting? Or are you looking for like expeditious consensus today?
Yeah, I guess I'd be okay with that. I think there's, there's time. Um, I know some members of the community have reached out about this. Um, I think 350 did, um, you know, trying to get us to hustle on it. Um, it's a pretty, you know, meaty bill. And so, if you want to take a look at it, it's, it would be, I think, the first of its kind in the nation, uh, to hold, you know, those accountable for, um, basically the, uh, um, I'll, I'll read a quick little burp here. You know, the manufacturing of fossil fuel products, extraction, um, pretty, pretty, uh, earth-shattering type of legislation, really. So, but if you, I, I'm willing to wait a couple of weeks, but no later.
No, no, I'll, I'll go ahead and give it a thumbs up.
Thank you.
So, just to be clear, this is going to come back as an agenda item or are we just going to send the letter? We're going to send the letter.
Send the letter.
Thank you.
Anything further? Okay. This moves us to ordinances and resolutions. The 2025 California Building Standard Codes with Chief Building Official Riley. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, so, every three years, um, the California Builders, Building Standards Commission releases the updated California Building Codes. Um, this cycle was about as boring as I've ever seen it, um, which is a good thing, I guess, for developers. Um, and then I have our staff recommendation, which is to introduce Bill 1052, An Ordinance Amending the EMC Title 15, Chapter 150, Sections 150.015 through 150.026 pertaining to the adoption of California Title 24 Building Standards Codes, including appendices to the CRC and CBC, the Residential and Building Codes for emergency housing patio covers, hemp lime, lime construction, and tiny houses. Um, and then I just have a quick run-through of the significant changes, which, like I said, they're not real significant. Um, the residential code actually was frozen for six years, so effective, um, October 1st of this year, nothing will change for the next six years in the residential code. Um, and local jurisdictions can't add anything new either. There's a prohibition on that. So, this is, the state is hoping to kind of spur residential development. In the building code, the only real changes were that we jumped to the newest version of the ASEE, which is the, um, the guide for engineers in designing structures. Um, detectable warnings, which are the yellow things that you see out on the sidewalk for blind people to hit with their cane, so they know um, that they're going somewhere where there are vehicles driving. Um, they clarified those. I don't know if you drive around town, you see they're kind of all different widths and all different sizes and it's very confusing. And the people administering the codes can't even figure out what they're supposed to be. But now we finally have guidance that they should always be 36 inches wide, which is very exciting. And then, privacy latches are now mandatory on accessible bathroom stalls. Um, the mechanical and plumbing codes, uh, nothing really changed in the mechanical code. Uh, in the plumbing code, there's stricter maximum flow rates for, um, fixtures in bathrooms and kitchens, but um, those are already there. In the Calgary code, they just kind of clarified stuff, so there isn't a confusion in the code. And then, um, restaurants or anybody serving food, more than a hundred meals per day now, you're required to have a hydro-mechanical grease interceptor, which the city of Eureka has been requiring for a long time. So, it doesn't change anything here. In the electrical code, now surge protectors are required in commercial construction and as well as residential. Um, and then, uh, island and peninsula outlets are no longer required in residential construction. I don't know why they did this. It seems like you want an outlet in an island, but it's no longer a requirement. Um, and the energy- And the energy code, um, mandatory EV charging infrastructure has been increased. And heat pump, space conditioning and water heating are now the standard for, uh, multifamily housing. And pretty much everywhere in the code, there's been a trend toward heat pumps and, um, they're almost mandatory at this point. If you do a performance-based approach, like when you're designing these, uh, commercial and residential structures, it's almost impossible to get them to pass, um, the code analysis unless you use heat pumps. So, it's not strictly required yet, but it will be, I'm assuming, very soon, um, it will be. And then in the California Green Building Code, um, they've increased the, uh, number of non-residential EV capable spaces for new parking facilities. And in residential facilities, they've increased the, um, number of EV charging receptacles required to one per each, um, parking stall for each unit. And this one could be a pretty significant cost for residential construction, um, that has a lot of parking, which doesn't usually come up, but we do have a pretty significant, uh, parking area with the new Sunset Complex. It's going up on, um, up on the hill where Henderson hits Broadway. And so this could have some implications on that project. And then, uh, multifamily with unassigned parking, in addition to the required receptacles, um, unassigned parking will require 25% of them to be, um, actual chargers instead of just the receptacles. And so here you have the suggested motion, unless anybody has any questions.
Uh, Councilmember Molton?
Thank you for that, um, enthralling report.
Yes.
I was curious about the EV chargers. I know I asked this, but I, um, when they require one per space, uh, do you happen to know if that just means they need an electrical outlet?
It's a, yeah, the receptacle is just the outlet. So they can plug the.
They don't have to have like a level two charger?
The level twos are only for unassigned parking or will be for unassigned parking and then in 25% of those spaces.
Okay.
Which I'm sure people are going to try to dwindle down to zero.
Sure, but that makes sense. Just running, uh, electrical out is not, not quite the same investment as putting in a, a, a medium rate charger. Okay, that's all my questions. Thank you. Councilmember Castellano?
Related question, and thank you, Councilmember Molton, for that and for the report. Are there any anticipated challenges? You know, I know sometimes with PG&E it's hard to get PG&E hookups to new construction and things like that. Are there any anticipated challenges with, um, PG&E being able to service the increased requirements or?
I'm not sure. Um, but there is a provision in the code that if, if charging is, or if the capacity is unavailable, then the building official can, can say, okay, you don't need to do it. There's no capacity. But I think in Eureka, I doubt there'll be a problem. I can't imagine anywhere in the city limits where that would be an issue.
Okay.
Unless the project's, you know, huge.
Great, thanks. Councilmember Fernandez, do you have any questions? I know you do. I can't see you though.
Yeah, I'm, I'm here in the ether. Uh, thank you, thank you for those questions, uh, Councilmember Castellano and, uh, Councilmember Molton. And I, I know it's been touched on that, uh, there may be some impacts to, to current projects, but these are projects that have yet to break ground. Or how does that work, um, as we're in the pursuit of, of housing in our community? How do these impact that with the projects that we have on the books but have yet to begin building?
So anything that has been applied for before the end of this year won't be subject to the new rules. And then anything that is applied for after the first of next year, um, that's when these will apply.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that it?
For now, for now.
Thank you. Okay. If there are no further questions, we'll open this item up for public comment. Is there anyone in chambers who'd like to comment on this item? Seeing no one, do you see anybody on Zoom?
I see no one on Zoom.
We will close the public comment period and bring it back to council for a motion in a second. Councilmember Molton?
I'll go for it. I haven't read one in a while. I move the city council way full reading, read by title only, and introduce Bill Number 1052 dash CS, An Ordinance of the City of Eureka, Amending Eureka Municipal Code Title 15, Chapter 150, Sections 150 dot 015 through 150 dot 026 pertaining to the adoption of codes.
Second.
Second.
So we have a motion in a second. If there's no further comments, please vote.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Aye.
Four yes votes. Councilmember Contreras Deloche absent. Motion carries.
This moves us to amendment to Eureka Municipal Code 92 point 02, California Fire Code Amendments. This is also with Chief Building Official Riley.
Um, so, this one is more of a housekeeping item. Um, the, the way the ordinance was written, we had to, every time we would do the adoption of the building codes, we would have to also change Section 92 point 02. So we just changed the words so that it'll track with Section 150. And unless they actually change code numbers, we don't need to modify, um, this section in the future. And staff recommends introducing this bill, An Ordinance Amending EMC Title 9, Section 92 point 02 pertaining to the California Fire Code Amendments. There's nothing new in the amendments in here either. It's all just, um, the same that we've been pushing forward for the last, I think, three code cycles. Um, there are some changes to the fire code, which I'll just briefly mention. They're not really anything that will probably be impacting anything in Eureka, but parking garages under 12,000 square feet now will require fire sprinklers due to the increased risk of fires from electric vehicles. And then they added a section, um, for micro mobility devices for, um, EV bikes and scooters and the amount of ventilation that you need in areas where those will be charged, but, um, fairly insignificant. And here's the suggested motion.
Councilmember Fernandez? Questions? No?
No, I think I'm good.
Great, thank you. So at this time, we'll open this item up for public comment. Is there anyone in chambers who'd like to comment on this item? Seeing no one, we'll bring it to Zoom. Do you see anybody on Zoom?
I see no one on Zoom.
So we'll bring it back to council for a motion in a second. Councilmember Bauer?
I'll make a motion, uh, the city council way full reading, read by title only, and introduce Bill Number 1053 dash CS, An Ordinance of the City of Eureka, Amending Eureka Municipal Code Title 9, Chapter 90, Section 92 point 02 pertaining to California Fire Code Amendments.
Second. We have a motion in a second. If there are no further comments, please vote.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche absent. Four yes votes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Future agenda items. This is an opportunity for council to request an item to be placed on a future agenda. Any future agenda items? Okay, seeing none?
No, I've got my.
Councilmember Fernandez has his hand up.
I can't see your hand. Councilmember Fernandez?
I've got to do more than be a giant floating head tonight. So, uh, I would, uh, like to take what was, uh, proposed at public comment and have a, uh, resolution, uh, opposing the attacks on Venezuela. Come back to council.
Okay. I'm looking around. Looks like we got consensus for that. So, um, Councilmember Castellano?
I'm wondering if we could include, uh, support of the War Powers Resolution in that resolution?
I'm absolutely open to that.
Yes. So we've got all thumbs up. That's the consensus. Thank you for bringing that back.
I.
That's the, uh, resolution that, um, has yet to pass, but it's basically saying that, uh, war cannot be enacted without congressional consent.
100%. Great. And this brings us for, anything further, by the way? So this brings us to city manager reports. City Manager Slattery?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight we have Social Services Coordinator Ozanian here for us to do an update on our stewards program, which is going to just be stewards now because it's not just going to be Old Town. So, welcome Hannah.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am so grateful to talk about the community stewards program and the, what we have going on at Uplift this evening. Um, we started as the Old Town Stewards Pilot Project and we're moving to our next phase going citywide. So I'm here to tell that story tonight. Um, I'll start with the background as far as how we got an ambassador program here in Eureka. Go over the Old Town Stewards Pilot Project itself. Give you an overview of our current activities we have going on and highlight some of the collaborative projects we've done over the last few months. Talk about expanding citywide next steps and then give a few plugs for some upcoming steward related events and resources. So a little background, this idea to have a community ambassador project here in Eureka came from the city's strategic visioning process in 2023. Ambassador pro, programs have been successful in many other cities, uh, statewide, nationwide, and even locally here in Arcata. In dreaming up this project, we pulled from different successful projects, including San Francisco's Ambassador Program, Mercy Peddlers, which is a volunteer outreach program in Sacramento, and locally the Arcata Community Ambassador Project, um, which was very helpful in showing us their routine and the ropes. The ideas between, behind these programs is they're focused on a particular neighborhood. And so each program will look different depending on the needs of that given neighborhood. Maybe it's more about beautification. Perhaps it's more about giving directions to tourists. But another common thread is that you are doing hospitality to all members of the area. So that is for tourists. It's for business owners. It is for residents. It's for members of our unhoused community. It is an exercise in hospitality to everyone. And another goal is just to fill, fill the need, um, create more connectivity between the city and other nonprofits. And, um, for us locally, we have this stellar program or Arcata does, um, but with Eureka, we were going to do a volunteer driven program, which the Arcata program is a paid program. So we had an opportunity to try out our need and our drive, uh, for volunteerism stewardship here. So we came up with the Old Town Stewards Pilot Program focused in Old Town, started, we really launched in July of 2024. We're an uplift program, so we're connected to many different wonderful programs and resources in the city. The mission to foster a welcoming environment in Old Town by empowering volunteers to serve as ambassadors of hospitality, promote local heritage and history, and provide assistance to community members and visitors alike. For that mission, we really have three main focus areas, uh, city beautification, outreach, resource navigation, and promotion of history and culture. So to execute our city beautification, we have volunteers that go out on their own or in pairs. Depending on their schedule, it's very flexible. And we also have deep cleans. Uh, so on Monday, we meet at the gazebo from nine, 30 to 11. Wednesday's at Clark Plaza. We start our shift, come together, say good morning, kind of map out a plan for the day, make our rounds around town and then come back, um, and reconvene, debrief. Uh, and it's a great way to not only do some beautification work, we do team building and we also get to greet all of the wonderful business owners, people, um, that are in Old Town. We also do, these, these focus out areas overlap a little bit. In addition, in our outreach and resource navigation focus area, we're just trained to be friendly, resourceful, uh, people presence in the neighborhood. Um, so we do this through a variety of ways. As I discussed, circulating the neighborhood and answering questions. So just on your own, usually if you're doing trash pickup or gardening, doing some other activity, you're available to answer questions. Could be for a tourist, could be for someone who is unhoused, could be, um, a concern from a business owner, but you're there to receive the feedback and try to offer help as you can. We've done tabling at Unity Day, which I'll talk about in just a minute. Uh, the summer concerts in Friday Night Market, getting uplift out there and the stewards are able to help, um, help us table, help us talk to the community and, uh, talk about our services we have available. And then we also facilitate a connections club. This is an outreach group we do on Tuesdays and Thursdays down at St. Vinnie's. It's an art group. Um, what we do is we open up the dining room at two o'clock, invite folks to come in for a snack, do an art project, really just to talk, to sit inside. Um, there's a lot of action down there. It's the same time as the open door mobile medical. So, um, as well as Providence's Resource Center is down there. So it's a great way to convene volunteers, folks that are working in this, these industries as well as our unhoused folks. We all get to sit together at a table. It's a beautiful experience. Everyone's invited. Here we are, Connections Club again, and I call it steward practice because it really is a practice of us learning the resources down there and, um, practicing hospitality. And then our third activi, our third focus area is the promotion of history and culture. We work with the organizations down in Old Town with many of them key folks as, as our stewards, Old Town stewards are onboarding, we have them meet and work with the Clark Museum and the Daguru Louis Cultural Center right by the gazebo. Um, so those are two hubs that our volunteers are familiar with. Try to support their staff, clean up around their area and direct folks there so folks can be passed along to other awesome things in our neighborhood. Um, and we also offer historical walking tours. So during these, and they're all free, these cold winter months, we're doing them on Arts Alive at 4:00 PM. So the sun is still out. So we have one scheduled for this Saturday at 4:00 PM at the gazebo and no need to RSVP. All are welcome. So those are the current things we have sketched out in, in process now, but we also have many other collaborative projects, um, that have come about in partnership with the stewards and then where we have, as a group of volunteers, have been able to plug in. I mentioned earlier, Unity Day, this is a project that has come about in the last six months. A project of Uplift Resource Fair down at St. Vinnie's, very, it has roots in a, in the summer barbecue fair that is, is held with Uplift, St. Vinnie's, C-Set. Um, but our idea was can we continue this and just do this once a month, once a month? So that partner agencies can come down, deliver services, talk to folks. We can talk to each other. We can have meals. We can have music and art and, um, it's been awesome so far. So we, uh, I will say it is an uplift organized, uh, event. My wonderful colleague Sienna Parish, who has worked with me on these projects, um, is the coordinator, but it really is fueled by steer, by stewards. Stewards are there cleaning up, getting everything going, getting the chairs set up and being a welcoming, friendly presence. And we could do things like this in other parts of the city. Other collaborations include plugging in for the Food for People distribution that happened a couple of weeks ago. We are, have this group of stews that are working with the Jefferson Center, helping organize their clothing closet, which perhaps we could sort of work it in with other clothing closets in the neighborhood. And tomorrow night, we're having a talk with the Eureka Heritage Society on the Green Book. Um, so we've been working with lots of other agencies. I also have a picture up there of Chris and we have Stan from Keep Eureka Beautiful, who is another good steward partner. So, so far we've developed a team of 15 committed, trained, awesome volunteers. In November, we had 78 hours of service over 42 shifts. We have some stewards that work six to six hours on average, maybe a week. Um, and some folks show up once or twice a month. We ask folks that, uh, that folks put in five hours of work per month. There's been improved cleanliness, hospitality and connection in Old Town and stronger. and stronger relationships with many of our community members. So for our next steps, as our, our work has slowly, um, been moving out or expanding out of Old Town, our hope is to have a single volunteer pool that can serve all of the Eureka neighborhoods, community stewards. Um, but we'll have small, smaller teams depending on the project type or the location. And we'll have our consistent uplift training. It is a, about 10 hours of training plus quite a bit of just onboarding. Um, so our next steps is, is to, to work in that direction. Um, and we have been working, uh, to develop new hubs where perhaps new stewards and our current stewards could work together, um, to develop out French, outreach on the waterfront trail. So that would be on bikes, hopefully. Um, doing outreach in downtown, so around the courthouse and here at City Hall. Putting it out there for Henderson Center. Uh, there are a lot of opportunities beyond that, um, for the stewards to do projects and plug in. We're not there to take anything over. We're only there to support what we've got in place. Giving a couple of the plugs that I mentioned earlier, tomorrow night, one of our projects is a, uh, a book talk on Eureka and Architectural View. This is an awesome, um, local book that really chronicles a lot of our art, architecture here. And Mary Ann from Eureka Heritage Society will tell the story of the book and how it came to be in the seventies, and it's, it's a very interesting story and how the book, um, maybe is it, is it, will there be a new edition? Um, it's a really interesting book and story and all are invited at the library tomorrow at 6:00 PM. Our next Unity Day will be on New Year's Eve at St. Vinnie's. Um, so the 31st Wednesday, um, though it is a holiday eve, uh, off, a lot of people are off of work and even with our last Unity Day, which was before Thanksgiving, it was a time for some families and folks that had time off to plug in. So if you have ideas or thoughts, or if you'd like to join us for Unity Day, please do. And my final plug would just to say, would just be to invite everyone to, uh, visit the Uplift Resource Center. If you haven't visited it in a few months, it is evolving to be a wonderful place to direct folks. Um, as somebody who does outreach and I am now able to send folks I meet to the Uplift Resource Center, and there's a wonderful team that is prepared and welcomed and knowledgeable. Uh, it's just a wonderful place, great staff and an opportunity to do many community steward projects. So that's what I have so far.
Thank you. Questions? Councilmember Molton? Uh, not a question, but a comment first. Thank you for that report and, um, there's so much going on. I appreciate the, the, the overview of everything. I just wanted to, uh, sing the praises of the idea of having people out that care about our community and every part of our community, from the architecture to the business owners, to the, um, people experiencing homelessness, to the kids in schools, and just being able to make connections with people. I work with folks who find themselves on the streets for many years and I think for a lot of folks, the hardest thing is just not being seen and not being treated like a human. And just to know that we have multiple programs out there. And this one is like, it's casual, you know, we're talking about history, we're talking about art and you're talking about this and that and also pointing people in the right direction. So you can connect with people on a human level without it having to be about service necessarily. Um, could just be, um, just talking to folks, I think makes a really big difference. And I think it's what makes Eureka, um, feel like a, like an inclusive place to be or working towards that, I hope. Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Castellano?
Uh, similar to Councilmember Molton, um, just want to thank you and your team for all of your work. Um, I hear great things about you from people in the community, uh, far and wide. So your, your work, uh, is much appreciated and yeah, thanks for just all of the positivity and care and deep genuine desire for connection that you bring to what you do. And, um, yeah, it's, yeah, I'm really, uh, appreciative that you're out there doing it.
Uh, Councilmember Fernandez?
Yep, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'm, yeah, first of all, I'm, I'm excited to have this, uh, potentially expand to Henderson Center and, and I love the idea of what you're doing with the Unity Days, uh, to give, uh, to give back to the volunteers that are giving their time as well. Um, I'm, I'm curious what the population of volunteers looks like or, or are we looking at, at those, uh, who are looking to fill their day? You know, those in, in retirement? Are we looking at students? Like what is the, what does that look like typically? I, I think you'd said you had around 74 volunteers or a cohort of such?
No, fif- 15 volunteers, but 74.
I'm sorry, I have no idea where I pulled that number from and I apologize. Uh, but go, go ahead.
We have an array of volunteers. We have some folks that are retired, some folks that work part-time and several folks that work full-time and really fit it into their lunch schedule. So there are quite a few stewards that, uh, I would say there's four stewards. Their main activity is participation in the Connections Club and they're really squeezing it in on their lunch hour. But they're coming and, um, being present and participating in a wonderful way. And, uh, so yes, and we do have some, it's a wide age range. Um, we have some younger folks and some folks that are older, so it's a great group.
No, that's fantastic and I, I appreciate that. Uh, have we done, and, and I'm curious because you said that we have, uh, some of the volunteers who lead tours and such, have we done any sort of outreach to the high school in terms of learning more or doing more around local history of that type?
Not yet, but that would be a wonderful goal to, um, for us stewards to offer tours for the schools. Uh, so if anybody could make that happen, we are available for scheduling.
I think Councilmember Molton and myself have a two by two with Eureka City Schools later this month, so it's certainly something we can bring up. Um, and then I'm, I'm curious, uh, I, I know you'd said that this is, uh, something that's offered, you know, a program that's through uplift and, and, and I'm genuinely appreciative of, of the, the volunteers that again, give, give their time and their dedication to this. Have we ever thought about, uh, a per diem type role for any of our unhoused folks to get them into, uh, to get them at, at least establish some sort of work history moving forward as they're trying to do better by themselves?
I can take that one, Hannah.
Yeah, please.
Thank you. Um, so our job skills training, when we first started that program, we had funding for stipends and we did have stipends for individuals who do that. Um, currently we don't have funding for stipends. Um, but our job skills training is soon to be, yeah, look, uh, Special Project Manager Davis can give us the status of, uh, job skills training.
Yeah, so, uh, the city of Eureka and Uplift Eureka have recently, uh, applied for a grant, the Clean California Grant. I believe it's $200,000 and, uh, almost, I believe half of that would be going to stipends and, and, um, funding for positions that, uh, with, for folks with lived experience.
Thank you, thank you for that update.
And whether we have the stipends or not, we'll definitely continue the job skills training program as well.
Are you done? I mean, anything further?
Uh, until next meeting.
Okay. Well, um, I just had a few words too. I just really wanted to appreciate your passion and what you bring to our city and our community. And it is, it's a lot of love and a lot of care. And I want to appreciate Jeff and, and these two out here, Chris and Roy, and everybody that's been working so vigilantly to make our city a better place. You know, I was thinking as you were talking, you know, 10 years ago, or maybe not even, maybe it was 10, almost 10 years ago. You know, when we were out in the marsh doing service fairs once a month and once a week, um, towards the end and how, you know, that was a time when it was like a critical time to get that all done. And it's not, I mean, maybe it's critical now, but it's more now, it's more out of care and wanting to lift up our community and the, the, the whole thing has just bloomed so much and been such a great thing to get just so many connections from all different populations, uh, coming together. And that's, you know, that's a healthy community. We lift each other up. We don't beat each other down. And that's one of the reasons I love living here is our community and how we get along. So thank you so much for being such a great advocate for that. You've really brought, you've really brought it and I appreciate you and all your great work. So if there is nothing further.
I just wanted to.
Oh, of course.
I really want to thank Hannah, Hannah, Hannah for what she's done. Um, her experience and her history with our community has been hugely beneficial to this program. It wouldn't be where it's at if it wasn't for Hannah and I really appreciate from her dating back to her volunteer days with Betty Chin back in 1910. But, um, her experience elsewhere as well as her familiarity with the community has been really beneficial, so thank you.
100% agree. And with that, if there's nothing further, where's my gavel? Uh, we're adjourned.
But wait, more questions?